Okay, Linda.
Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the meeting of the Silver Town Board of Commissioners to order today. The first item on our agenda is to approve our agenda. We do have a resolution that needs to be added to the agenda. It is the resolution to request to authorize us to allow sidewalk and street dining. So do I have a?
Can I add that to the agenda, please?
Okay. Thank you. And I will say Amanda has gotten instructions from the School of Government, and we are to take a roll call with votes. So I will let her do that. Now, we have a motion. Is there any discussion? Then all those in favor, Amanda?
Barbara, you'll need to answer yes or no.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
David?
Amanda, I can't hear you very well.
David, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Yeah, I said yeah. Sorry.
Okay. Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
And we don't have Ben?
I do not have Ben at this time.
Okay. Then the motion carries, and I'm going to place that item at number four and move the current number four, the discussion, down to number five. So that will be the order of our new business. Thank you. And we also need to approve the agenda now. So.
Make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, and Amanda will take the roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
David?
Yep.
Greg?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That motion is approved. Now we'll move on to approve our consent agenda. I would like a motion for that.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Barbara made the motion. Amanda?
Barbara?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Then we will move on to public comments. Anyone that wishes to make a comment on items that are not on our agenda, and I believe Amanda said we have comments.
I have one person, Christine Taber.
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead, Christine. I set the timer.
Good morning, everyone. I wrote down my comments today. I want to talk about mask compliance at local businesses, and I'm going to use PJs as an example. I'm sure most of you are familiar with this business, and I want to make clear I like and use PJs. However, it's also clear that they are flagrantly not following CDC or Health Department guidelines. I'm sure you're also aware that if the business owner is unwilling to force enforced mask and hygiene requirements, there is little that can be done. The Health Department, the state, the county, and the Jackson County Task Force are not able to help. However, it seems to me things can be done. I truly hope that one of you has a relationship with the business owner and could have a friendly conversation with him about compliance. Furthermore, since you hold the keys to their business to operate in the city limits, you could use your influence to demand they do a better job of compliance. Finally, I just want to reiterate that the proper government agency that should be empowered to cite enclosed non-compliant businesses should be the local Health Department. And since they are hamstrung, it's up to you. I would also request that someone follow up with me in regards to this since you can't respond in this room. That's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Ms. Taber. And now we'll have our reports. For the mayor's report, I just want to emphasize the fact that we still need to work on the census. If every one of us could ask our neighbors, have they done that? Because according to the latest report that I have from the league, every non-counted person cost us eighteen hundred and twenty-three dollars a year in federal and state funds. So over the next decade, that's eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars we will lose in grants and other funds. So we have got to see if we can get everybody counted. So that's really all that I have. Thank you. Barbara?
Well, it's good to be back with you this week. I had was down the day after the last meeting. I lost Wi-Fi and everything for about five days. But I have now have a new computer. I have had my whole system checked out, and everything's good to go. But I do, I'm very sorry that I could not participate in that meeting. I would like to remind everybody like David usually does about community table and either donating food or donating money or, you know, to help all these people because there's so many people that don't have enough to eat. I'd also like to thank our law enforcement and first responders for all the work that they do because I know they work long hours and they take good care of our town, and I really appreciate it. I'm encouraging everybody to still go to Harold's. They're very appreciative of all of us that locals that do have tried to keep them afloat, and they seem to be doing a lot better than they were. I'm still having problems on this road with the speed. And I sound like a broken record. We've only had the one accident. But I mean, we have huge wrecker trucks now. Two came down through here the other day, back to back, flying down the road. And I just, I'm amazed that somebody's not gotten hurt again because they just will not, they don't observe what the town, the county put out here a speed limit sign that blinks, and they just blow right by it, especially first thing in the morning when they've probably slept too late and they're trying to get to work on time. And yesterday, Joe and I had a problem because they, we couldn't see that, we were backing out of our driveway, and one of the people that are in the apartment above us came flying up the hill. And I yelled to Joe to stop. And the guy, he had plenty of time to stop. He just zoomed right around us and went on up the hill. So until citizens can start being a little kinder to each other and quit being speed demons and think of other people, I just don't understand that we can't cooperate with each other. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Barbara. Mary?
I just want to reiterate what I said in the last meeting. You've seen my kids bouncing around. And being a second grader again for me is interesting, all of the challenges with remote learning. And I just sympathize with our teachers and our parents and our kids as we introduce this new normal and how we all adjust to that. I'm having computer difficulty this morning for my child, so that may interrupt my time in this meeting today. So just a heads up. That's it.
Thank you, Mary. David?
Yeah, sorry, my name says Suzanne on there. I can't figure out how to change it, but it's me. It's David. So I'm sure everybody here has heard about those videos that the Western students made, which were extremely upsetting and unacceptable. But I want to point out Western's response. You know, they shut that sort of language down immediately, and they kicked those kids out of the school. And because they took that action, people around campus are not going to keep using language like that because it showed them that it has real consequences. And I want to contrast that reaction to how the state of North Carolina has handled some events that have unfolded lately in our town. So, you know, there was a protest in Silva, and people flagrantly violated state law, bringing firearms to it. This was the incident a few months back. But the state, and I'm talking about the District Attorney's Office, because our police department obviously operates under their direction, they chose not to prosecute in this case. And they, you know, spectators can't bring guns to a demonstration. But the DA's office said they weren't spectators, even though they were watching from above the demonstration because they were there before the demonstration started. It was really one of the weakest excuses I've ever heard to not prosecute a crime. So then we have the Zoom bombing. And again, there's no charges. They couldn't find a crime that was committed. So I don't know, I spent like fifteen or twenty minutes looking at our ordinances and state general statutes. I mean, Chapter 24, Article 1, Section 24.5, offenses against the public peace. You have disturbing the peace, committing a breach of the peace, violent or boisterous conduct, calculated disturbed the peace, making unreasonably loud noises to disturb the peace in good order, using obscene language towards others in a manner as to be offensive, obscene acts in the presence of others. I mean, to be fair, like, it doesn't state in our ordinance that this has to happen in a public place, but it does cite a state law that says it has to be in a public place. But there's no case law that says a Zoom meeting is not a public space. And an appellate court in Pennsylvania ruled that a Zoom meeting is a public space. And I have no doubt that a North Carolina judge or court would also do the same. But that ordinance aside, you have General Statute 143-18.17, disruptions of official meetings where it's illegal to willfully interrupt, disturb, or disrupt an official meeting. I mean, there was impersonation of a public officer or public official when they changed their name to Eric Ridenhour in order to not get kicked out of the meeting. You had admission of guilt to human trafficking, saying that they owned child slaves, which maybe, you know, we don't take that claim seriously, but the DA's office absolutely should. They sexually harassed someone. I don't know if that's a crime. I didn't really research that. But, you know, a similar incident happened in Orange County at an NAACP meeting, and they are pursuing charges. So, I mean, my point in this is not even trying to uphold North Carolina law makes people feel more comfortable to keep breaking it. And I think we're all aware of the demonstration that took place in downtown Silva Monday evening with people openly carrying firearms. You know, this is a clear escalation and a growing conflict that we have in this community right now. And the only reason people felt comfortable openly carrying firearms during a demonstration is because our DA's office allowed them to do this a few months ago. You know, I feel like the DA's office, they're failing at their obligation to uphold law in North Carolina. And it's encouraging this sort of illegal behavior. I mean, this demonstration was, seemed like a flagrant violation of our state law. The attendees even called this a protest. You can't have a gun at a protest in North Carolina. I mean, there's no two ways to interpret that. I've heard these people parked at Bridge Park and got their guns out of the car and walked across town property to get to the courthouse or the library steps. And that's also not a place where you can have firearms. So, I mean, this is a recipe for disaster, what's happening right now. But, you know, I think we can talk a little bit more about later, like what we can do to keep our community safe. But, you know, all this is just to say, I would kind of welcome the invitation, extending an invitation to our DA to come talk to us. I mean, these are three events that happened in city limits, and I think we should get an explanation from them about their response or their lack of response, because I have a lot of questions and a lot of concerns regarding their response to these incidents. Sorry, that was very long-winded there. I didn't mean for it to be. And then the last thing I want to mention is if we can add an agenda item to our next meeting, we kind of started a brief discussion about what uses we can put some of that CARES Act money to at our last meeting. But I want to continue that, especially now that that money has rolled over into the general fund balance. So if we could, if the rest of the board agrees, I'd like to continue that discussion as an agenda item for the next meeting. And now I will, I'll be quiet. Sorry, that was so long.
Thank you, David. And you might check with our attorney about the DA if you want to have a conversation with him. And also, we can have Mike look into if that's something that our board can work on with the CARES Act money, and we can get it on an agenda. Thank you.
The DA is Ashley Welch. Maybe we can reach out to her to have her come.
Thank you. Greg?
Thanks. So I am, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm extremely proud of my employer, Western Carolina University, for taking swift and decisive action in combating racism and ignorance on our campus. I wish I could say the same for the county. For years, we have been dragging our heels and ignoring the issue, pretending that we are immune from the realities of bigotry and injustice. So to the county, we aren't asking that you solve racism, and I've said this before. No one entity has the power to do that. It's only through collective action that we can right this scourge. I'm asking, what are you so afraid of? The citizens of Silva have marched for a brighter future, and you have seen us march. Citizens have the right to voice their opposition and be part of a collective change towards a more just society. Do you really believe that we would bust out our windows and loot our stores? My and your tax dollars are now being spent to guard a fictitious myth of busloads of Antifa and violence in the form of them, the destroyers of history. When we asked you to have empathy for people of color and backgrounds and realize that this is a place of, that this piece of public art does not collectively represent us, you turned your head. When we asked you to have empathy for the economic health of your county seat, you made a truly dizzying spectacle out of crime scene tape and fences. Months ago, I cautioned you in kicking the can down the road. What is exactly what you are trying to do, and is becoming ever more dangerous? The new answer is, everyone just go home. Forget about it. What leadership is that? Now we have armed men and women parading the streets of Silva in an overt act of intimidation, carrying long guns, assault rifles, and pocketed pistols past our businesses and our children. Those guns are loaded and ready for action. This militia is violating the law and our authority to keep our community safe. Now I ask again, who are you so afraid of? Consider this. The original intent was for the soldiers to preside over the courthouse. The courthouse was moved to its current location in 1994. Would you honor that historical intention and move it to the current Justice Center? That's all I have.
Thank you, Greg. Ben?
Yeah, hey, good morning, everybody. Sorry, I'm having some computer issues to get on. Yeah, I just kind of, real quick, just echoing exactly what Greg and David were talking about. I mean, yeah, it's kind of crazy having folks roaming around the streets with long guns. And I understand this whole, you know, the Second Amendment business, you know, but part of the Second Amendment says a well-regulated militia, without getting into the whole legal thing. But it would really be nice if there was some type of regulation for that militia. And I do worry about where this goes. But what I wanted to mention more upbeat type thing, thanks a lot, Mike, for talking to Mainspring about getting mountain bikes, you know, okay to be up at Pinnacle, as well as Black Rock, that they, that they are considered unmotorized vehicles. And so that's something that we can have bicycles up there. You know, we talked about this last, you know, before COVID, you know, working on with Peter Tay and the Local Mountain Bike Association to start looking into building some trails, multi-use trails up at Black Rock, as well as Pinnacle, to kind of, again, bring folks in here, you know, get people outside, but also bring in some, add another tourist attraction, a healthy tourist attraction to our area to bring tourist dollars, bring folks in. So I'm excited about that and going to keep moving forward with Peter as we can. And we'll kind of keep you updated on that. Other thing was, thanks, Mike, too, about getting those tables out, more places to eat outside. I don't know if there's anything for, I know some of the tables we have already have awnings. I don't know if there's any more awning space because it does rain a lot lately. So if there's any, and plus, you know, a lot of bright sunlight, if we're able to use some of that money to get some awnings for some covered areas as well for folks eating out. And, you know, the chipper curve thing, Jake, I know this, and Mike, it's an ongoing thing, but, you know, I ride my bike back and forth there. And like, this is more the county DOT part of the issue, but that curve is the road is just where they've got those Jersey barriers. It is just moving more and more and more into the road. And it's fine for me on my bike, but I see David probably, you know, he drives down there. It, that lane is getting so much more narrow, and it is a real blind curve. And I'm really concerned about safety coming around there as that people, especially after it rains, there's a lot of mud there. Folks are going to drive around there. And I worry about a collision around that corner. So, yeah, that's, that's what I've got today. We're going to talk about COVID here with Melissa in a little bit. So I'll kind of skip and wait till that discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. That being all of the commissioners' reports, we'll move on to the manager, Mike.
Good morning.
Morning.
Wanted to reemphasize about the 2020 census. North Carolina currently is ranked 37th in the nation in their census response. And the state of North Carolina stands to lose 1.5 trillion dollars. Jackson County is 98th in the state. Out of our 100 counties, we're 98th with a response rate of 33.7%. The town of Silva is a little better at 46.8%. And we're municipalities, there's 551, we rank 306.5. So I'd like to, again, encourage people to fill out the census. When we look at the 10-year period of time, the figures that the mayor shared, that's eighteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars per person that we stand to lose if we don't get the folks to fill out the census. So I'd like to urge that. The time limit has been shortened. It is now September the 30th, and that time's coming up fairly quickly on us. Also, did want to re-mention about the picnic tables we've, Jake has put at Bridge Park, and also the Pocket Park there at Allen Street and Railroad. We've added a few tables or at that location so that we're trying to assist our business owners with outside seating. That's it for me, unless you have questions. Greg?
Shortened by a month.
Excuse me. Public Works.
I'm sorry, Greg.
I was saying, I was wondering if you could explain why, or if you know why the census was shortened for a month.
I don't. I don't know. But it has been shortened. Initially, it's October before, but this year it's been shortened to September. But I don't know the reason.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Then I will move on to Jake and Public Works.
Hello, everybody. Sorry, I was having a little bit of computer problems this morning myself. I've been working with Mr. Morgan and the DOT for our street side and sidewalk seating here downtown. That's shaping up pretty well. I think we'll be pleased. We do have quite a bit of interest in that. And Mike mentioned the additional picnic tables. We've moved most of the picnic tables out of Potteet Park. It's not being used to the Bridge Park. If we continue to see interest there, we do have substantially more tables that we can move over there, too. And I'll be happy to explore some awnings or tents or umbrellas or some sort of coverage solution. We're looking at purchasing about 25 water barricades and 25 crowd fencing panels to help with our street side dining, for lack of a better term. Yet, we're doing that with COVID funds, the CARES Act money also. And I'll be working this afternoon, I'll be working on a plan to present to the DOT for their approval so we can get that going as quickly as possible. I've also been working with the Chamber and the MSSA and Silver Rotary Club to organize a downtown volunteer effort. Julie's been instrumental, and Lisa McBride also in setting that up. So I appreciate that. We don't have an exact date hammered down yet, but when we do, I'll let you guys know. And hopefully y'all can let everybody know and get a lot of public participation in that. The Rotary Club does that, try to do it twice a year, and it's normally weeding, pick up, pruning, mulching, that kind of thing. And it helps the Public Works Department out a great deal. So if you guys could drum up some support for that, we'd certainly appreciate it. Still waiting on two design build proposals from UMA Geotechnical Contractors and Worster Geotechnical Contractors. I expect those just about any day now, and certainly within the next couple of weeks. Mowing with all this rain, I'm sure you guys have seen my, our crews out trying desperately to keep up with the grass here in town. And invasive plants, the privet and the kudzu. Hopefully, the kudzu will be dying back as the days start to shorten soon. We've been spending a lot of time on that kind of thing. The 2019, 2020 solid waste report is due to the state on September the 1st, and I've got that completed. I just need to proofread before I submit. That's all I have today. Any questions?
Question. Hey, so what we, when we're out there, we're with Watch for Me, and, you know, we talked about some more signage and those little, you know, those signs that stick on the ground and, you know, that would kind of replace the pylons. Anything on that as far as moving forward with that? And the other thing is just some more, you know, standard signage at Grindstaff and Mill?
Working with the DOT on that, Ben. Well, they supply the signage on their roads, and they, we'll need an encroachment agreement for the additional little signs in the right of way. Well, that ball's rolling, and I'll keep you updated on that.
Cool. Thank you.
Barbara? You unmute.
I have a question for Jake. I think he can help me. I mentioned before about the removal of the signs for Harold's Supermarket because of the county regulations. But I have noticed that Ferrara's has two signs that are bigger that are placed in the ground out where you go into that development. And I wondered what the difference is.
There isn't. Either myself or county code enforcement hasn't seen those yet. So there is no difference. And Ferrara's is not in compliance either, and we'll deal with that.
Okay, because they're about this big. And, you know, Harold's were really small. And I just happened to wonder why, what the difference was, so.
The only difference is that Ferrara's haven't been spotted yet, unless they have The only difference is that Ferrara's haven't been spotted yet unless they happen to have a temporary sign permit, which I'll have to follow up with the county on and see that, see if they do or not.
Okay, well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Greg.
So I listened to the governor's budget message message yesterday and it looks like if it's approved, the county will be getting a substantial amount of money to distribute to municipalities. So Jake, I'm just wondering like, where are we with the Bridge Park project? Have we thought about that? Or I feel like, and this is something that's been said before, is that shovel-ready projects need to be in the works. When we, if we, if and when we do get this money.
Greg, I met with American Rivers and Water. Water has asked the partner Ken Brown on that. They have a vested interest in the watershed. And they've been super, a super valuable resource for me on that. I met with them yesterday. We're ready to to take proposals for construction documents. And so when that money comes available, I do want a shovel-ready project and we're right on track for that. We've we've got the money to pay for those construction documents. It's just a matter of getting them. So we're right on track with that.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions for Jake? If not, we will move on to the Police Department report, Chief.
Good morning, everybody. Happy Thursday. Hope everybody's doing well. Uh, I'm gonna sort of, I'm gonna give you a lot of numbers really fast. And if anybody wants a copy of the numbers that I'm sort of just firing at you, I'll be happy to get your copies. Problem because I'm gonna go as quick as I can through them. So twenty twenty has been interesting for the whole world. It's also been really interesting for us. We've been a in all hands on deck sort of mode for several months now. The good news is we're we're still fully staffed, which has been a huge, just a help and a blessing to us to have enough people. What I want to do is just sort of run down our I we call them actions here at the office, but what it means is it's basically situations that our police officers have dealt with. Some of them are reactive, meaning we've been dispatched to those situations. Some of them is going to mean that it's been proactive where we have rolled up and saw something happening or we've been proactive and found things that are happening. But so far in twenty twenty, our officers have dealt with nine thousand two hundred and thirteen different situations. To put it in perspective for you, that's a thousand more than all of last year. So and we've still got what a quarter of the year to go. So we've been busy. Incident reports as a whole are down. Arrests are down. That's for a couple of reasons, COVID being a big, a big reason. But our calls for service are definitely up. And that's where that thousand, a lot of that number, the thousand is coming in is is a lot more. Citizens are calling us a lot more than they used to. So like I said, I'm just gonna run down, I'm gonna fire some numbers at you, but if anybody wants a copy, I'll be happy to give it to you. But we've investigated two hundred and ninety-eight suspicious persons. A hundred and sixty-seven suspicious vehicle calls. These those types of calls can be some such a variety of different things. It could be so many things. Um, we about sixty larceny and shoplifting situations. Fifty-seven domestic disputes. We've been part of fifty-five involuntary commitments. A lot of these numbers, as I go through here, you'll be able to make a direct correlation with the mental health situation in our in our state. Is it, is it? It's not helping us. We're having to deal with a lot of drug addiction, a lot of mental health, a lot of things that therapy would normally in different resources used to handle. Now it's sort of left up to the police to deal with, but two hundred and fifty-six traffic accidents. That's down. It's about, I think it's about a one a day, probably. That's down. Our college has been, students have been gone a lot. COVID has also reduced traffic for several months here. We've answered and checked out two hundred and eighty-five alarm activations. We've helped eighty-one stranded motorists. We've had over a thousand traffic stops this year. Those are for criminal violations, speeding violations, you know, anything that that you can get pulled over for those type of things. We've had over forty animal-related calls. Everybody had a note on that. Everybody always says, well, how come animal control doesn't handle those? Well, animal control does dogs and cats. We do a lot of, this is gonna be funny to you, but we do a lot of goat herding and cow reining in Silva. It's happens pretty regular. Our guys are actually really talented at it. It's not something I'm very good at, but they are. So thank goodness, but it happens a lot. It seems like a small problem until they're standing in a roadway in a curve and then all of a sudden it becomes a really big problem. So we've done sixty-eight health and welfare checks. Those are varied situations too, where you have a loved one that hasn't heard from somebody or that's also the category of call where we may have somebody slumped over the wheel in a parking lot or something like that. A lot of times those are are drug related. Sixty-eight times we've done investigative those type of situations. Incomplete nine-one-ones or nine-one-one hangups, about twenty-two of those. Those are really dangerous calls because what that means is something's interrupted and I want communications to either the caller or somebody else. And so it's got a high propensity for danger there. Uh, we have a category called crosswalk observation and enforcement, and we've had, our officers have logged seventy times where they have sat and watched our crosswalks or done something with crosswalk safety. Uh, that's a major, major increase in from the years past. It's important to us as well. We do it drunken disorderly or drunk and disruptive or disorderly conduct. Those are usually bar calls, that kind of thing. We've done eighty-five of those so far this year. And I'll finish with um our our CAD system is how things get documented for us. We've got twelve overdoses in there. We've we've been to more than twelve. Tell you, I don't think that number is accurate. But Silva PD this year in twenty twenty, we've got eleven Narcan life saves. So we've given eleven people, the Police Department, eleven people and and very potentially save their lives. That means we got there first, most likely and before naming anybody. That's a big deal. I'm really glad we have that, have that resource available to us and and our officers are comfortable using it and get the chance to use it. And in the final note, we have received our our police department got new respirators as part of the COVID monies that you folks approved. And we really, really appreciate that. That's something that's honestly, it's basic equipment at most police departments, but we didn't have the top equipment we needed. And so and this made it happen. So we're very appreciative. That's it for me.
Any questions for Chief Ben?
Yeah. So the Nar- who's who uh, with a Narcan, who does that come through? Is that Health Department or?
And that was, I'll, I'll be, I'll have to check and see, but I think there's a, there's a program here in the county that where we did it, we don't have to pay for it. But I do think it, the Health Department is is connected with it and maybe another group, and I'd hate to say who I think it is. I'll probably be wrong, but I can get back with you later.
Okay. Yeah, just curious. Yeah.
Yeah, we're grateful for it.
Uh, David.
You always have someone on patrol that I get, I imagine you have to have some, you have training to be able to administer Narcan. Do is that something all the officers get or only a certain number of them?
Yes, sir. All our officers are trained to administer. And they have it. They're all issued it as well.
Greg.
I'm you. So you mentioned the the mental health being a huge issue for you all and thank you so much for all the work that you do for the community. I'm just, I have a question about how equipped your officers are to deal with these kinds of problems? What kind of training do they receive?
We are, we are as equipped as, I guess, I would say there's sort of a basic level of of education that all law enforcement get in North Carolina and we're, we're there. There are some areas for us to get much better at that. And probably the biggest opportunity for that is a course that made for law enforcement called CIT or Crisis Intervention Training. And during that training, you learn to not give a medical diagnosis to anybody, of course, but you learn to learn the, if you're dealing with somebody who's acting erratically. To make the, you know, is this a diabetic situation? Is this person, you know, are they bipolar maybe, you know, schizophrenic, like what to make a quick assessment of what could be this person's problem? And then they teach you tactics and and methods of dealing with that person to help them deescalate them and not do anything that would scare them, you know, in some situations. You know, a police officer needs to be firm and say, no, sit down, you know, other situations, that's the wrong thing to do, you know, and so that class is really helpful in that. And I'll be honest with you, in other places I've been, it's kind of basic training, but here it's not very popular. But I've, when I first came here, I I've been searching for that course and the way it worked is you, you know, we can only afford to send a few people to train at a time. And so it's like, well, we're going to send two here and two over there and that kind of thing. But I got up with Iowa and they're gonna teach our whole department in twenty twenty-one. It's their first scheduled course. Yeah, COVID, of course, has set us back. We were going to be doing this six months ago. Over it has set us back. And so in twenty twenty-one, we are scheduled according to to the lady from Iowa will be in the first group that has this class and our whole entire department will be going through that and they'll be here locally. So it'll be free training and it'll save us a lot of money. But that that's sort of the first step towards getting to where we want to be in this in this category.
Thank you. That sounds really good.
Yes, sir.
And and I was just gonna mention too, you know, like I think Harris would be, I mean, I can't speak for Harris, but you know, there there's definitely a resource there to, we have, you know, full-time mental health folks, as you know, the when they come in and you know, I I can tell you that if the officers themselves have any specific questions, you know, the I I know the folks that work there would be happy to to talk to them about things and and, you know, and as far as the you know, the overdose stuff, you know, my, I'm happy to, if there are any questions that any of your officers have, please, you know, I I'm happy to talk to them about, you know, anything medical related, anything in general, but but if the medical part of it, if I can be helpful and and I know the other docs I work with also would be happy to, you know, if there are any, if anything comes up and questions, you know, feel free to just to give us a shout out.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And we're, we're really lucky here to have a hospital here in our town and then also a university. And so pretty much about any topic that we run across, we've got some pretty good resources right here, right here, close by that we can lean on. And I'll tell you that those eleven situations, I mean, that's a huge deal for for me and for us. I mean, that's eleven, that's eleven times that somebody very potentially would have, you know, we'd been given death notifications to their family, but because of this tool we have and and the officer's willing, willingness to use it, that that wasn't the case. And so, you know, that's, like I said, I I say that one for last for a reason. That's a big deal to.
Thank you so much, Chief. Now we'll move on to the Twosha report. Oh, excuse me, Mayor, Barbara.
I just, it's probably not the right time, but after the Twosha report, I did have a question I forgot to answer, and it wasn't for Chris. But I wanted to ask you. So you can go ahead with the Twosha report and then I'll.
David, do you have a report?
Uh, yeah, just real briefly, I'll change, talk about a change to the disconnect policy. Twosha jumped on board before the state required to, required water authorities to no longer disconnect and we suspended our disconnection policy. And the state's orders were tied to, well, they they expired and Twosha. We extended ours, so I really didn't bring the policy report with me, but so water authorities can start disconnecting people's water service now, but we are not starting that yet. Uh, it'll be September before the first disconnects occur and you'll have to be behind four months. Um, and if you set up a payment plan with us, we will not disconnect your service and you can reconnect free of charge as long as you set up that payment plan. So we're being a lot more lenient than the state requires on this because really, none of us want to be shutting anybody's water off during a pandemic. So easy, simple change to the policy there. So no one really has to be concerned about having the water forcefully cut off. It will be reconnected or will not be cut off as long as you set up the payment plan. The state requires a six-month payment plan. We've extended ours out to be a year. So anyone that's behind, it'll be a lot easier for them to catch up. That's it.
Thank you, David. I believe that's all of our reports. And we'll move on to new business. Our first item on our agenda is Jackson County Health Department coronavirus update. And Melissa, thank you so much for being here.
Thank you for having me. Can you guys hear me well?
Yes.
Okay. First of all, I want to thank you guys for inviting me to come and speak today. And I thought I would just give a general overview of COVID nineteen as well and go, as well as go into some specifics about how this has affected our community, our response. And then always end with some data since people are very, very interested in data, which I appreciate and understand. So as many of you may already know, COVID nineteen was identified in Wuhan, China back in December of two thousand nineteen, hence the name that feels like decades ago at this point, since we've been actively working on this pandemic since then. COVID nineteen is a respiratory illness that is most often spread through those respiratory droplets. So whenever you're in close contact with someone, when you're coughing and sneezing and talking, which is why we recommend, of course, waiting six feet apart from one another, washing your hands frequently and wearing a cloth face covering. There are a variety of symptoms. They seem to be expanding mu- very frequently, but most often COVID nineteen is associated with fever, with headache, with cough, shortness of breath and things of that nature. So fortunately, this virus became a public health emergency of international concern on January thirtieth. It became a pandemic on March eleventh and then declared a national emergency in the United States on March thirteenth. So a little bit more locally here in North Carolina, we identified our first case on March third. And that was associated with someone who had traveled to an area where there was a high prevalence of COVID nineteen. Just a few days later, on March nineteenth, in North Carolina, we identified community spread. And that means unfortunately, someone contracted COVID nineteen and they don't know how that they got it. Bringing it a little bit more local here in Jackson County, we identified our first case of COVID nineteen on March twenty-third. That was in a part-time resident. We identified our first case in a full-time resident on April thirteenth. And at that point, we knew we had community spread in Jackson County. From there, unfortunately, we had our first death on May fifth. And since then, we've had six additional deaths. So this virus is very, very prevalent in our community right now. And as you can see, Commissioner Guinea has they are data dashboard put up as as his background. If I have the ability to do screen share, I'll be happy to walk you guys through it at a little bit later in my presentation. Since all of this has gone down since early February, we have been working actively with our regional and local and state partners to make sure that we have a plan and we're implementing said said plan to keep our community safe. I am eternally grateful for the partnerships that we have here in Jackson County, our county leadership, our town leadership, and then for moving further up the chain. But it has been very, very busy, as you can imagine. Our Emergency Operations Center has been open since March sixteenth, and that's unprecedented. I can't think of a time that our EOC has been open for this long. So if you call that six-three-one help number, somebody will be there to answer your questions or refer you to the Health Department so we can answer it a little bit more specifically. We hold regular meetings with our healthcare providers, Harris Regional, Cherokee Indian Hospital Authority, Vincena's Farm Worker Health Program to make sure that they understand this ever-changing guidance because it feels like it changes every other week. We also work with our other health departments to make sure we're all on the same page since we know many people maybe live in Jackson County but work in a surrounding county and vice versa. And then since school has started back this past week, we have been having regular meetings with Western Carolina University, Southwestern Community College and our local public school system so that they feel like they're able to safely reopen and then flex as things change. So like I said, it's been very busy. And since this has started back in February, here at the Health Department, we've been answering numerous calls, numerous complaints, reviewing business reopening plans. We've been working through an outbreak at a long-term care facility for clusters thus far in local businesses and a local church. We have been doing case investigation and contact tracing since the very start and have not stopped. And then, like I said, we've been flexing and changing to this ever guidance. And this is on top of, of course, all the other mandated services that the Health Department continues to offer. We're open. You can still come here and get a vaccination or have a prenatal appointment or environmental health staff will go out and do an inspection. So it's been, it's been quite a time. And I know we're not the only ones dealing with this. It's been, it's been quite a time and I know we're not the only ones dealing with this. I think a very popular phrase right now is contact tracing. So I wanted to tell you guys a little bit about what that looks like in Jackson County and across the state, and then what it could look like in the future. So if you test positive for Covid-19 or any communicable disease. The healthcare provider that tests you is required to report that to the health department in which that you live. So whatever address you give, whenever you go to that. Healthcare provider to get tested, they'll report that result to the health department. And at that point, one of our staff will call you on the telephone and they'll ask you a bunch of questions. And these questions are things like, how are you feeling? When did your symptoms start? Were you aware of your diagnosis? Do you need any supplies? Are you able to isolate from the people in your household? Um, who have you been around? How long were you around them? And we ask these questions for a variety of reasons. First of all, we want to make sure that you're okay, because this virus can be deadly. And if you're experiencing symptoms, we want to be able to send somebody out there to check on you, send EMS out to perform life-saving care if needed. Also, we want to make sure that you have the supplies at home, so you're able to isolate and you don't have to go out into the community. And accidentally spread the virus to others. So if you need medicine, if you need food, if you need other supplies, we'll coordinate with emergency management and, and bring them to you. We also want to know who you've been around, so we're able to notify them that they have the potential for being exposed. Once we get that information from you, we'll call up those close contacts. And we don't tell them you were exposed to so-and-so. We keep all that information confidential. We just want to be able to stop this disease transmission chain. We notify those close contacts through the phone and we say, you've been around a person who tested positive for Covid-19. Here are the steps you need to take. You need to quarantine. You need to go get tested yourself. And do that same type of information sharing and questions. Again, to make sure that you're able to properly quarantine without accidentally spreading the virus to others. All information is kept confidential. The intent is not to get anybody in trouble or to instill fear. It's truly, we want to make sure. That you are able to stay healthy, get the help that you need and stop this disease transmission. Also, we want to check on you, because like I said earlier, this virus can be deadly. So if we need to send somebody out there to perform that, that additional care, we want to be able to do that and know where you are. So. Um, you can get that care that you need. The future of contact tracing for us is going to look very similar to this. We'll continue to make those phone calls. I think some information in the news most recently has been about apps that you can download to your phone. And Google has created some of these apps, which could be beneficial to our community. How these apps work, to the best of my knowledge, is you would go to the app store. You would download them on your phone by choice. And if you were to get diagnosed with Covid-19, you would put your information into them. At that point, if, um, someone else also had this app downloaded on their phone. You would exchange Bluetooth beacon keys and that you would be notified then that you were exposed. This app isn't available in North Carolina yet, but if it does become available soon, it would be, um, targeted towards our institutes of higher learning, such as Western Carolina University. For students there who chose to download this app. Again, regardless if it is used in our community, we will still rely on phone call contact tracing, because we know. Many people might not want to download an app and they would better, we would better be able to connect with them over the phone. Um, do I have that option to share my screen? Can I do that? Okay. Let's see here. Oh. I think you have to allow me. It says you've disabled screen sharing.
Amanda, or can you find?
And if not, that's okay.
Says I can allow one person to share.
It's no worries. I'll talk through it. It's not a problem. And Commissioner Guinea has it as his background.
Now see if you can.
Let's see. Oh, there we go. Okay. Are you guys able to see my screen? Okay, great. So we at the health department are keeping track of a lot of data recently, as I'm sure you can imagine. And what we have done is we have developed a data dashboard specific to Jackson County in conjunction with our Jackson County GIS department. We update this every weekday by five o'clock or as close to five o'clock as I can, because sometimes it gets a little crazy over here. And what it shows is an analysis of the lab confirmed cases of Covid-19 and those who live in Jackson County. A question I hear a lot is, does this include our WCU students? And yes, it does, because while they live in our community, we consider them a part of our community. So if you were to come to our website, which is health.jacksonnc.org, click on this big orangey red button. It would bring us to our page, which tells you all about Covid-19. And then if you click right here to go to our data dashboard. This will take you to the page, which explains the best ways to interpret this dashboard. Talks about data definitions. An FAQ about the dashboard. And then any limitations, which I always like to bring people to and bring their attention to. Just in case they're looking for something that particularly might not be on this dashboard. So. To view the dashboard. You can see from here, the total cases of Covid-19 that have ever been diagnosed in our community. How many are currently in isolation, the total deaths, total tests reported to Jackson County Health Department. And then a breakdown of cases by demographic, by age, gender, race and ethnicity. I pay very close attention to all of these numbers, but the one I like to look at most frequently is the total in isolation. Because that lets me know how many cases of active infection that we have. You can also look at a historical analysis of that, so you can see where we have peaked, where we've declined and where our numbers are starting to go up a little bit at this point. Some questions we get a lot about this dashboard is why it doesn't always match the state's dashboard. The main reason for that right now is the fact that we include all lab confirmed cases of those who've been tested via molecular tests and also antigen tests. Both tests are valid, both people who are anybody who's been tested through either molecular and antigen test. It's treated the same way. They're considered an active infection. They go into isolation and we do contact tracing. Unfortunately, at this time, the state's dashboard only tests and shows those who have been tested through a molecular test. So there's a little bit of discrepancy there. Um, I think the state is working on some sort of modification, so their dashboard can show that as well. When people look at this dashboard and they ask me questions on it, I like to say looking at data is very important. But again, we need to make sure that we're all staying home as much as possible. And then if you need to go out following those three W's. Wash your hands, wear a cloth face covering and wait six feet apart, because these are our best public health tools to prevent the spread of this virus. So the next steps for the health department and for our community at large is to continue to share and spread this message. We know that a lot of people don't have the luxury of staying home, because you got to go to work, you got to go to school, you need to go to the grocery store. And I fully understand that, which is why we always like to stay, stay home if you can. But for those essential shit, essential trips, follow those three W's. And we will continue to test and to contact trace until we're able to get rid of this virus. But please be mindful that testing and contact tracing does not replace those three W's that I talked about just a few seconds ago. We are also now working diligently on coming up with a plan for flu vaccination. Because we know flu vaccination is very, very important and it is vitally important this year. Because we don't want people to get the flu and Covid-19 at the same thing, which is a very real possibility. Flu is deadly and so is Covid-19. So we want to give you all the tools that you have to stay as healthy as possible during flu season. And we also don't want to stress our healthcare system and overburden them. Um, we will be coming up with our flu outreach and vaccination campaign very shortly, so please look for that information. I'll make sure to share it widely. And then we are preparing for a Covid-19 vaccination campaign. Um, that information should be coming out soon. After, of course, the vaccine passes thorough clinical trials and it is approved by the FDA. Unless you guys have any questions, I just want to take a time to thank you, thank our community leaders. Thank our community, all of our partners, because these past six plus months have not been easy for any of us. And I have been impressed. At all the hard work that we have done to keep our community safe. And I know there is much work to continue to do. It's not been easy. It's hard every day and it will continue to be tricky until we're able to get rid of this virus. So I urge our community to continue to stay vigilant. It's not over yet, but we do have the tools that we needed to stay safe. We just need to continue to do them. So. I thank you guys for the time today and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Melissa, for your report. And, um, is there anything specifically that the town can do to help you?
I think as leaders, you guys are a wonderful example on following these behaviors such as wearing the three W's. So when you're out in the public, please continue to do that. And then, of course, when flu vaccinations are available, if you could promote it, help us promote this, this messaging. Maybe even if you've used social media, put that up on social media, so our community can see people they respect doing the things that we need to do to keep safe. I think first and foremost, that would be a wonderful thing for our community to see.
Thank you. Does anybody else have questions for Melissa? Uh, Ben.
Great. So yeah, thank you so much for everything you guys do. I know the health department was, you know, it's, funding is always an issue. And even before this, you guys were already, uh, you know, working overtime and really tight. And then just this bomb got dropped on you and, um. I really appreciate everything you've done. Um, and, and you guys are working really hard and, uh, and much appreciated. Um, so I wanted to ask a couple of kind of things here to specifically, so, so testing. Um, so say someone wants to be tested. Um, where can they be tested? When should they go and seek testing? Uh, and, uh, you know, what are our kind of local resources for that?
Absolutely. So your first question is, where can you get tested? There are many, many places you can get tested. We have a tool on our website called Find My Testing Place, which if you just go to health department's website, you click on that, you can type in your zip code and it'll tell you all the local testing resources. But to name a few, your healthcare provider probably does testing, so call them up and ask. Locally, we also have Walmart, which provides testing Monday, Wednesday and Friday. Our urgent cares, we at the health department provide testing weekly, call and make an appointment. Um, those are probably our main testing areas. I highly encourage not going to the ER to be tested. Because there are many other places that you can get tested faster and it will be significantly less expensive if you don't go to the ER to be tested.
Yeah.
As for when to get tested, you are experiencing symptoms, we recommend you go get tested at that point. Call ahead first. I don't want you showing up to a doctor's office symptomatic. To be tested, give them a call, because oftentimes we're doing testing outside, so you're not accidentally exposing others. If you hire a close contact of someone, you're not necessarily symptomatic. Need to wait five to seven days after the last time you've been exposed. Because it can take up to 14 days for this virus to present in your body. We don't want you to get that false negative.
And what kind of testing are you doing at the health department? Are you doing the PCR, um, LabCorp stuff? Is that what you're?
We are, we're doing the molecular PCR test. We have ordered a rapid test that is also molecular, but we don't have access to that, that mechanism yet.
That, is that going to be the saliva test or is it going to be?
It's NP.
Okay, gotcha. So, yeah, there is. There's a saliva test that, that some people are using somewhere. It's not quite as accurate. It, it has its uses. Um, but the gold standard is what we call the, uh, the, the PCR, the molecular test, where it actually. Looks for the RNA in the, um, you know, the genetic material, uh, uh, in the, in the virus. It detects that. So these tests are, as long as they're done well, which I've had it done once, it's, it's un- very unpleasant. Um, but, uh, it, it, it is very, very accurate and, and something to, um. Yeah, it's very accurate. So low false positive. Um, and, um, so a couple more questions. Um, uh, let's see here. Um. Uh, let's see. So can we just run like a scenario? Say all of a sudden. You know, you're, um, a couple scenarios. So one is exposure and one is, uh, you know, feeling sick. So say. I, I find out that a friend of mine, uh, or someone I was in contact with, um, comes down with, with Covid. Um, and is, is diagnosed with it. What should I do?
If you find out that someone that you were exposed to or friend, whatever, has Covid-19. You need to figure out, when was the last time I around them? Because the period of infectivity for someone who has Covid-19 is 48 hours prior to symptom onset or 48 hours prior to when they got the test, depending on whether or not they have symptoms. So if, say you and your friend hang out last Saturday, they came down with Covid-19, it's a week later. And they got tested, I don't know, midweek. What you should do is figure out again, when were you last around them? If you were around them during their period of infectivity, what you need to do is you need to quarantine. And you need to get tested five days after the last time you were around them. If you were around them well outside of their period of infectivity, I would self-monitor for 14 days. If you then start to experience symptoms, at that point, go get tested. These timeframes get real confusing. So if you have a scenario such as that, I recommend first of all, calling the health department and we can walk you through it, because. These dates sometimes swirl in your brain and it gets a little confusing.
Totally. Great, thanks. And then, um, and if I'm positive, so I, I don't feel well, I go get tested. I guess a couple of things. One, I'm sick, I go get tested and I'm now positive. Or I'm worried that I was exposed and I go get tested and I'm now positive. So what, what do I do in those situations?
If you test positive for Covid-19 and you're asymptomatic, you are to isolate for 10 days from your date of your positive test. You can be released from isolation as long as that last day you are fever-free. If you're asymptomatic the whole time, of course, you're going to be fever-free. If you go get tested because you're symptomatic and you come back positive, then your 10 days of isolation start the day of symptom onset. You can be released from isolation as long, after 10 days from your symptom onset, as long as your symptoms have improved and the last 24 hours are fever-free.
Great, thanks. Um, and I think. The, yeah, I just want to reinforce the flu, getting flu vaccine, um, is, is going to be, is really important. Uh, it's always important, even more important this year. And, and, um, you know, kind of the latest, just a little couple of things that, um. I've heard, you know, this, this week, there was the, um, you know, the plasma treatment, um, that was announced. And again, that's something that's been around for quite some time. Um, you know, I, I don't even know about availability. I just want to reinforce that, you know, when a FDA-approved vaccine comes out, that is really what, that is going to be the game changer. Until that time, these are all kind of treatments, um, that may help certain people in certain situations. Uh, but, um, but really we have to just kind of. You know, keep this, I always think about it as a forest fire and I bring this up a lot and, you know, the, the more, the more wood that the fire has to burn. The hotter the fire, the, the, the more widespread the fire is going to be. And by doing these things, like masks and, and, uh, you know, wearing masks and washing your hands and keeping that distance. It really, it's like, it's a containment type thing. So it just, it contains this and it, it avoids the, the virus having more fuel. For the, for the fire. And, and that's why I think we've actually done, seems like a pretty good job in Jackson County and definitely in Silva. Uh, you know, we've. I, I see so many people out with masks and, um, and doing what they should. And, you know, and we in the hospital have not been bombarded, uh, to date. And so hopefully we'll keep it that way. Um. And, um, and Mike, are we able to, and Amanda, are we able to put like, uh, a, a, a link on our Facebook to the dashboard to Jackson County's, um, Covid page? Um, it might be worthwhile just to have that on there, pin that on there. So, um, folks can kind of get, get to it if they need and get information. And, um, the last thing I wanted to mention, um, you know, we're talking about just the tracing apps. So, uh, I, I'm happy to email the, the whole board. Um, Matt, Apple has a really good explanation of what these APIs are. And it's basically a random number that your phone generates, um, and sends up to a, a cloud. And once, uh, the health departments can hook into that cloud information. Um, again, everything is random and these numbers change. Uh, it just basically allows people to, it helps the, the, the contact tracing. And then all of a sudden your phone dings, it doesn't upload any of your contact information or anything like that. Um, and it just, if your phone dings and says, hey, you've been exposed to someone with Covid. And then, um, then you can find out, uh, you know, you know, through the health department, it helps the health department track you. Um, as, as someone who's been exposed. That is not up and running. I was actually just trying to see if it was working in North Carolina. There's, it, it's not going yet, but, um, but that is something that. Apple and Google have developed and it allows app, um, developers to, to, to make those, um. Very anonymous, uh, uh, AP, uh, very anonymous numbers or whatever data they're using, uh, with your phone to find out, um, if you've been exposed. But that's something that's coming, but is not active at this time in North Carolina. So that's, um, that again, thanks, Melissa, for being here. That's all I have.
Thank you all. Um, David has a question.
Yeah, I'm curious, um, the health department's opinion on the, the data that we got from that Mathematica study. Um, and, uh, are you familiar with that, with the sampling of the wastewater? Um, you know, because it, the, the grant for the sort of pilot study ended. And if that's something that, you know, the community wants to continue, uh, we'll have to fund it ourselves. So I'm curious if that data was useful to you all, or, um, if that's something that the health department would like to see continued. I mean, I'm a, I'm a. I mean, I'm a, I'm a big fan of of data, but was it uh, was it useful data?
So our health director has taken the lead on this project and I haven't reviewed the data thoroughly. I'd have to connect with her and then I can get back to you on that.
Yeah, the last time I looked at it, I mean, it was fairly incomplete. So they they only did four uh, samples. So you know, i- it's hard, like that's such a short time, it's hard to really draw any correlations. It seems to me like in order for that to be useful, it would need to be carried on. Um, and you know, there's been some discussions on, I guess, like who should fund that? Um, I I feel like, you know, Twasa has an interest in doing that. So is the town of Silva, certainly the public health department. So it'd be nice to see sort of a joint uh, funding effort. Um, if the health department felt like that was uh, useful. So I guess, yeah, maybe we'll, we'll continue those talks with the health department. Looking forward to see if um, that's useful or not. So for the the uh, the flu vaccine, and I'm glad you you brought that up. Because uh, you know, I've only probably gotten the flu vaccine a couple of times in my life because I always felt like I was young and healthy and didn't need it, right? And this whole COVID thing has really taught me that uh, you know, a big part of this is about keeping others around you healthy. And you should absolutely, I I imagine, get the flu vaccine even if you are young and healthy because you are still a vector for the flu. So I encourage people to do that. Um, and also um, I've been reading a lot in the history of Jackson County book. Uh, and they have a section in there on the nineteen eighteen flu pandemic in the county. Um, and it's kind of some, you know, hokey stories in there about Jackson County during that time. But it's sort of a theme to them all. Um, and and it's one of people helping one another out and making personal sacrifices towards the betterment of their community. Um, they have this one story in there, it's kind of a perfect metaphor for everything. And I don't know if it's true or not, but apparently there's this drunk guy walking down the street with a jug of whiskey in his hand and he's making a bunch of noise and causing a ruckus. And this woman who's taking care of a bunch of sick people, she comes out and, you know, she asks him to donate his jug of whiskey. Um, because it, and maybe they were using that to help people with the flu back then. Um, and tells him to be quiet, and he does. And um, you know, it's it's sort of a good metaphor for how, you know, or, you know, like how do we convince our community today that making sacrifices for the better good is what we need in this pandemic? And it seems to me like that's kind of ingrained in our history. You know, that sort of seems to be a mountain value that people uh, during the nineteen eighteen flu pandemic really made those sort of sacrifices for others and there's a lot of stories around it. So you know, I just uh, encourage people um, to continue making those sacrifices, right? I mean, and it's pretty simple in this case, I mean, just wearing a mask, right? Is is and, you know, social distancing, being conscious of when you go out. Um, not really a a question there, but just wanted to to point that out. So uh, thanks for coming and talking with us and encouraging us to do the same.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just had one quick question. Has the timeframe for um, getting results back from tests, has that improved? I know you spoke of a rapid test, but on the other tests like with um, using LabCorp and everything, is there a faster return now on those results?
There is, it's usually dependent on which lab is used. So we use LabCorp, the health department, we do our testing clinic on Tuesday and we usually see results by Thursday or Friday. So the turnaround on that is much quicker. Again, if if you send to another lab, it might be a little, little slower. But um, I think the inundation of the labs back in July slowed them down significantly. Um, but capacity has increased regardless. A lot of our providers are starting to use that rapid test, which is like forty-five minutes in-house because people want to know, they want to know the results. But we are seeing turnaround time faster on um, the lab that we use at the health department and a lot of healthcare providers use LabCorp.
Thank you. It just seems like that will help control um, the virus, the faster you can get the results back. So thank you for that. And again, thank you for being here. We all appreciate it.
Thank you for having me. And if you guys ever want another update, I'm available, just let me know.
Thank you. Um, next, we will move on to um, our second agenda item. The resolutions for event, street closure. And we have to um, vote on each of these separately. So so I'll start with um, the first one. Um, the resolution to request a festival permit for the Walk for Hope. Um, these are in your packet. Do I have a motion to um, approve this resolution? Barbara, um.
I'll make that, I mean, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there any discussion? Um, Amanda, will you take a roll call?
Barbara?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
David? David, we can't hear you.
Sorry, I'm unmuted. Yes.
Greg?
Yes. Yeah.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that motion has approved, been approved. And thank you, Chief, for continuing this. Um, I think it's a great um, event for our town. Uh, next is um, a resolution to request a permit for Treat Street. Um, and that also is in your packet. Do I have a motion um, to approve this resolution?
I motion to approve Treat Street.
Okay, um, we have a motion from Ben.
Rem?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. I can't, Amanda, I can't hear you.
Um, can you hear? Mary? David?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you. That motion is approved. Um, next is um, the resolution um, to request a parade parade permit for the Veterans Day Parade. Um, do I have a motion? Um, Barbara?
We'll make that motion for the veterans' parade.
Okay, um, Ben?
Yes.
Mary? Greg?
Yes.
David?
Yes, yes, yes.
Barbara?
Yes.
Okay.
That motion is approved and I apologize to everybody, but it's just um, with these Zoom meetings, um, not everybody can see a hand raise, so we'll have to go through this. Um, the resolution to request a parade permit for the Christmas parade, do I have a motion for that?
My son's birthday, I would love to make that motion.
Okay, thank you. Mary has made the motion. Um, all those in favor?
Ben?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barbara? Mary?
Um, that uh, motion is approved for that resolution. Um, next resolution is to request a festival permit for greening up the mountains. Um, do I have a motion for that? Greg has made the motion.
Barbara?
Yes.
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 Greg?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you all. Um, that resolution is approved. And that's the end of the resolutions for agenda item number one, uh, two, excuse me. Um, the next is um, zoning request proposals. This is to help us update our um, zoning ordinances. Uh, and Mr. Morgan, can you um, speak to that?
Be glad to. The town has received two proposals for the zoning ordinance update project recently advertised. The two firms submitting are Withers Ravenall and Jay Turner Consulting. The planning staff has reviewed both submittals and which are complete and offered a project scope as requested. The planning scope, excuse me, the planning staff recommends that the town engage Withers Ravenall for the zoning ordinance project update. Their fee is twenty-five thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars with an estimated timeframe of six months. The Jay Turner project was at fifty-seven thousand, three hundred with an estimated uh, twelve months timeline. So we're ending uh, in this resolution that we enter into agreement with Withers Ravenall.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Do I have a motion to um, accept this resolution um, authorizing the town manager to enter into the agreement with Withers Ravenall? Barbara has made the motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor, um, reply to Amanda.
Is it me?
Ben, yes. How are you voting? David?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Mary? Barbara?
Yes.
That resolution um, is approved. Um, so.
Can I ask Mike a question about an ordinance at this time? Or, okay, uh, I had a uh, a person that lives in the city limits that asked me if we have anything about Jake breaks. I think Linda, you used to have a problem with hearing that. And I didn't know and I couldn't find it when I was trying to look up an ordinance about it. But he said that uh, the log, these really large cement trucks and everything are coming off the exit on Grimes Staff Road. And it's all night long because they go to the cement place and get their load and go out because sometimes they've got a long way to deliver. And he was, he said, it's just so loud. He said, if they could stop the Jake breaks after they come down the ramp, but they leave them on all the way down the street. And he said, it really, they don't get any rest at all at night. And I I told him I would bring it up. I didn't know when was the proper time, but that I would do that.
Thank you, Barbara. Uh, Mr. Morgan, can you address that or look into it?
We'll be glad to look into it. I'm not that familiar with your ordinance, but to my knowledge, you do not have anything with Jake breaks. But Eric and and I will get together and uh, and look into it and make a recommendation as far as what the council would like to do.
I appreciate that because I I can tell him that we are in the works now to find out an answer.
And thank you. I do know I have seen signage in some towns that disallow that in their city limits.
Wayneville has one, yeah, Wayneville has one.
Okay. Sorry, we're off track, but not by much. Um, next is the ordinance amendment for section thirty dash fourteen of our ordinances. Again, I'll ask Mr. Morgan to um, elaborate on that.
Well, we hope this is the final step in getting the outdoor seating. This is at a request by NCDOT that spells out uh, in in the agreement what the restaurant owners would have to have uh, with some chairs being a minimum of six feet from any trap lane. Um, being the matter that the sidewalk is not obstructed, that uh, handicap accessibilities and of course, any fire plugs or anything like that wouldn't be uh, blocked. Uh, this also addresses the the speed limit that are road that could have outdoor seating. Restaurant owner's liability, well, they'll need to sign on the town as the, a rider on their insurance policy and also NCDOT that restaurant owner has to have all the appropriate permits, zoning, health, ABC permits that's necessary. Um, and we'll be looking at this on a case-by-case basis. And of course, once the governor opens back up the restaurants in the entirety, within thirty days, the outdoor seating would need to go away.
Thank you, Mike. Um, do I have a motion to um, approve this um, amendment to our um, ordinances?
I'll motion to approve.
We have a motion. Is there any discussion? Okay, then um, I'll ask for a vote by roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Can't hear.
Wait, you waiting on, you waiting on me?
Uh, we're just, this is a lag in internet connectivity, I think. So Barbara said yes and Mary said yes. So David?
Yes.
Okay, Greg?
Yes.
And Ben?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, that is approved and hopefully we'll get this on the way to help our restaurants. Thank you. Um, the last item on our agenda is a discussion of Jackson County's action on removal of the Confederate statue. And I will just, um, since David asked for this to be on the agenda, I will defer to him right now.
Yeah, thanks. Um, so I mean, sort of as I alluded to um, in my opening uh, comments, that, you know, I think we have a a big safety concern on our hands right now in Silva. And I think we have somewhat of a a failure on the part of the state to um, to keep us safe and on part of the county. So um, you know, I I take this very serious. Um, there's been a lot of threats. Um, there's been an assault that's been going on uh, around this statute debate. And I think that the town needs to take uh, a stance, not against the, you know, the statute, but rather uh, take a stand for public safety. So um, you know, I looked through our um, our ordinances and general statutes. And um, you know, there's, I I found this statute, general statutes, chapter nineteen, which is offenses against public morals, abatement of nuisances. Um, and you know, I'm not uh, suggesting legal action on the part of the town. Um, a- at this point, for sure, it's just um, with, when you read this chapter nineteen, um, what are nuisances under this chapter? Um, section B, it's the erection establishment, continuance, maintenance, use, ownership or leasing of any building or place wherein or whereon uh, that are carried on, conducted or permitted repeated acts which create and constitute a breach of the peace shall be considered a nuisance. And it goes on to define a breach of the peace as um, meaning repeated acts that disturb the public order, including but not limited to homicide, assault, affray, communicating threats, unlawful possession of dangerous or deadly weapons and discharging firearms. And certainly the situation that we have right now around the statue, it easily meets two of those. We have had an assault or at least an alleged assault. It has not been uh, it's not been a conviction yet. Um, and plenty of communicating threats daily. Um, and although again, no charges in what I consider to be unlawful possession of dangerous or deadly weapons. Um, so I I think what the town needs to do is declare this um, statue a nuisance because it does absolutely meet the definition of a nuisance. Um, to be clear, um, the reason this is here, the reason that this ordinance exists, or this general statute exists, is for the abatement of these nuisances, which I do not propose that we abate at this point because I I think it could be argued that the county has made good faith efforts to stop the nuisance from occurring or reoccurring. Um, although at this point, the communication of threats keep happening and the assault happened after they took action. Um, but it it gets us on the books of declaring this uh, nuisance. Um, and in the future, if these acts keep keep continuing, then we do have a a way to keep our community safe by pursuing action for the forfeiture of that property. Um, so that's, that's what I wanted to discuss with the board today. Um, I do, I do have a rev- resolution that I drafted that declares the statue a nuisance uh, and a public safety threat that I'd like the board to consider. Uh, but yeah, open, opening it for for comments from others here.
Anyone else?
Um, I, I think that was well said. Um, something has to be done about this. It's uh, it's an untenable situation. We've talked about about this at length. Um, and and I would definitely support um, your idea about declaring this a nuisance.
Um, okay, uh, Ben, did you have something to say?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think clearly it it.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think clearly, it really does meet the definition, as we've seen. It's, and it's going to be an ongoing thing, you know, it's at the end of my street, you know, it's a nuisance that I can't walk down the stairs when I want to go downtown anymore from from that standpoint. But from a safety standpoint, it really is. It's just like, no, I see this every day. And, you know, it, it's definitely something I think that we should pursue. I'd like, I'd like to point out, you know, you know, I know that the the board vote for asking the county to remove the Confederate statue is only only three to two. And declaring this a nuisance is not necessarily another, you know, reiteration of that same request. One thing that this does is it is it helps hold the county accountable to ensure that it stays safe. Removal isn't the only way to do that, but it does put pressure on them to make sure that they are taking all good faith efforts that they can to keep this safe. So even if you don't support the statute's removal, this, this is just a way to ensure the safety of our community. So I would encourage other people, I mean, it's, you know, it's just an acknowledgement that this is a very dangerous situation. It's not that you support the statute being removed as the only remedy to it. Although I think that it will continue to be a nuisance until it is removed. But that's really not what declaring something a nuisance necessarily means.
Okay, Barbara?
I'm glad you made that perfectly clear, David, because I still have not changed my opinion about the statue. But I do not like anybody being threatened or anybody hurt over this. But I just wanted to make it perfectly clear that I still am against the removal. I think there should be a compromise. A lot of people don't think it can happen. But I've had many, many calls, many, many people stopping me, and that are local residents. And I just, I'm not going to change my mind on that vote. But I will vote for being more thoughtful and trying to protect the public.
Thank you, Barbara. Any other comments?
I just had a question. I was noticing there was maybe some videoing happening there recently, and the cones were not in place. Was that taken down for just that reason? Or are they still down? Forgive me, but I did not look when I drove up Spring Street last night.
Yes, Chris?
Do you hear me?
Yes.
So obviously, it's the county, but I can give a little bit of insight for that. The cones are all down. The only thing now is a, looks like a couple decorative, I haven't been up there, but it looks like a couple decorative chains on the landing just before where the statue is, that I have, like, I haven't been up there, but I'm sure it says, don't go past this point, or something like that. But all the orange cones and all that stuff is not there now.
Can you walk on the stairwell? Or it's, you're saying the fencing?
You can walk up the stairwell, but but you can only go so far. And I assume, I'm only assuming, you can come down the stairwell, but only so far.
You still can't go all the way up the steps. It's still blocked off.
That's correct.
And is that a day to day decision? Or is that something that the county has?
I would, I mean, based off the quality of the chain that's there, but it's, like I said, it's decorative. It looks nice. It doesn't look, it doesn't look like a temporary thing. But I can't really speak about that. I don't, I don't know.
Yeah. Oh, good. I was gonna ask Mike if you heard anything back from from the county.
Okay, let's let Mike.
I did have a conversation with Don Adams. And part of the reason why the cone's being removed is at our last meeting, we was concerned about the cones being left there, how ugly they looked. It looked like an obstruction zone. And so the county's trying to make, make it look a little nicer for people coming in and visiting. And that's, the cones were removed, as per your request. We started that conversation with the county, and it followed up.
Yes, Greg?
I just wanted to make the point that fencing off public spaces is not a compromise.
All right. Thanks for your comment. Anyone else? So David, what are you asking us to do?
I do, I have a resolution that I could, that I could read. It just, it's, it's pretty brief.
Well, can I just say that you should share that? I don't think we can vote on it today, because everyone doesn't have a copy of that. But if you could share that with Mr. Morgan and with our attorney, and make sure that it's appropriate, and then we can vote on it at our next meeting, if that's what you desire.
Yeah, absolutely. I think same sort of process we did before, have our attorney look it over, and have the board get a chance to view it. Do you still want me to read it? Or you want to just email it out?
What's the pleasure of the board? Do you want him to read what he's has? Or do you want to wait until it gets sent out?
I would like for that to be read as part of the public record. I think that this, this is so up to the minute that we need to hear that now.
Everyone else?
Do we have to vote on having it for the next, being on the agenda for the next meeting or anything? Or are we just, we all okay with that? Or do we have to unanimous consent?
I will defer for to someone that can tell me what what we should do if we need to vote to have it on our next agenda. As long as, yes, Mike?
In the past, my experience is if we have two council members that's wanting to put it on the agenda, or it seems to be something that you want to discuss, we've put it on, just very similar to the discussions we've had today about this matter. We didn't vote to put it on. We had one, possibly two or more, members that wanted to discuss it. And so we add it to the agenda.
Thank you. So we do not have to vote on it. Could I just see those that want him to go ahead and read it for us? Barbara?
Yeah, he can, he can read it. But I do want it on the next agenda.
Mary, do you want it read? Okay. And Greg does. Ben? All right. Would you please read it for us?
Yeah, and it's by no means in final form. Welcome to accept edits to changes. It was just sort of a first draft. But it says, whereas the continued presence of the Jackson County Confederate Monument in Silva NC has resulted in repeated acts that constitute a breach of the peace. And whereas the presence of the Jackson County Confederate Monument in Silva NC has resulted in the continual communications of threats and an alleged assault. And whereas it is the duty of the town of Silva to be first and foremost concerned about the safety and well being of its community, now therefore be it resolved that the town of Silva deems a Confederate monument located in Silva NC to be a public nuisance as defined by general statute 19-1.1, and a hazard to public safety.
Thank you. And you will get with the attorney and Mr. Morgan to make sure that everything in there is what we should have at our next meeting. All right. Thank you, everyone. I think that that is the last item on our agenda. So I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I motion we adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn our meeting. Last, Amanda, do to do a roll call.
Barbara?
Yes.
Mary? You gotta speak. So that's the point of the roll call.
Yes, yes, yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned.
Bye, guys.
See you, guys.
Bye bye.